The March 31st meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pudge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we provide an opportunity for residents to address us prior to the council meeting on issues related to Eden Prairie City government. Typically, our meetings are held on the first and third Tuesdays of each month. This one is obviously the fifth Tuesday, so it does vary a little bit. The open podium period of time is from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers, and if you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. The phone number to call is 952-949-8412. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, I will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. Again, if you have any questions, please contact the city manager's office. The first item that we have on the agenda tonight is proclamations and presentations, and we have quite an unusual number of them tonight. The first one is recognition of Terry Pika for Minnesota Community Forestry Outstanding Volunteer Service Award. Mr. Luthammer, are you going to be going over that?
Yes, Your Honor. Council members, it's my honor tonight to help recognize Mr. Pika, who I know many of you know. I'd like to ask him if he would step forward and meet the mayor at the podium. He has an award that he's been presented by the Minnesota Society of Aboriculture, and well-deserved, nominated by our staff in the Park and Recreation Department. And as you know, Mr. Pika, for a long time, has been a very strong member of the Friends of Birch Island Woods. And they sometimes quietly go about their business, but they do a lot of business on an annual basis, from the plant sales to the plantings that they then actually do at Birch Island Woods. And it wasn't just something that was an event quite a few years ago. It's happened year after year after year, and Terry has been someone who has been there year after year, and not just the day of the planting event. He is back on a regular basis to ensure that the plants are doing well and are well-protected and are growing in a way that will be sustainable for a long time. And he is an example of somebody in our community, one a longtime resident and member and contributor. But I think this really points out what people can do when they are really committed. And when it comes to our natural resources, Mr. Pika certainly is that. And nobody more deserving of this award. We felt very honored when he was selected as well, because we really believe that it was well-deserved, and to have another organization recognize that as well is very rewarding to us, too. So I want to personally say thank you to Mr. Pika. We've learned a lot from him and the methods of doing things, and especially within the Birch Island Woods, and it's certainly a much better place for his group, but also based on his efforts, too. So I think our community really appreciates that, and so we want to say thank you and turn it over to our mayor as well.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much for the recognition. I've been a resident of Eden Prairie all my life, and I saw the park system grow from the early 1970s, when Marty Jessen headed the park system up, through the tenure of Bob Lambert, and now with Jay. And I must say, we have a great, really a great park department. And I just wanted to, a little bit now and then, I'm a horticulturist by trade, to keep it that way. So, thank you.
You really deserve this.
Thanks.
Take the ones that... Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight for this. Nice to see you too, Mayor. All right. The next item is a donation of a trailer for the Eden Prairie Players and the Eden Prairie Community Band, and this is donated by the Lions Club.
Yes, Your Honor, council members. You remember last council meeting, the Lionesses made a contribution towards this same project. And so, not to be outdone by the Lionesses, the Lions have come forward, and that really secures the funding necessary for this trailer. And we travel, our bands travel to other communities and need some assistance in transporting the equipment, and so we really think that this will be a good resource for them, as well as we plan to have it labeled and branded in an Eden Prairie way, so a nice way to travel around the cities and get recognition for what our members of our community that volunteer and go throughout other cities do for us. So we want to say thank you to both the Lions and the Lionesses.
Great. And then another donation to Park and Rack, the donation of pickleball nets.
Yes, a gentleman that no one would recognize, Jerry Moss. Jerry was instrumental in getting the pickleball program, especially the Southwest Metro Pickleball Association. We see Jerry, I wouldn't say daily, but pretty close to daily, both at the community center in the wintertime and also at Pioneer Park in the summertime organizing pickleball. And he has been gracious enough to donate six pickleball nets for us to use throughout the year, so.
That's great. And if people want to take up the sport, you can get information on the city website or in the Park and Rack magazine.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. Donations from programs like the Lions Club and people like Jerry Moss really help make this community a wonderful place, and we are very appreciative of these donations. Is there a motion to approve first the Lions Club donation?
Sure. I move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $2,000 from the Eden Prairie Lions Club for the purchase of a six-by-12-foot trailer to support the Eden Prairie Community Band and the Eden Prairie Players Theater Programs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion on the pickleball nets?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of six pickleball nets from Eden Prairie resident Jerry Moss, at an approximate value of $240 to be used at Pioneer Park Tennis Pickleball Court.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is an Arbor Day proclamation, and we've been participating in Arbor Day, gee, I don't know, do you know how many years, Mr. Luthammer?
I think we're 33 is the... We'll change the signs.
Okay.[446.22][446.22](laughter)
We'll get the sticker coming to us and change the signs to reflect it.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Eden Prairie has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways, now therefore I, Nancy Tera Lukens, Mayor of the City of Eden Prairie, do hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2015, as Arbor Day in the City of Eden Prairie, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry programs. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations.
So that would be adopted by the city council on May 31st, pardon me, March 31st of 2015. The next item is a proclamation for Eden Prairie Gives Week, and the executive director for the Eden Prairie Community Foundation, Mark Weber, is here. If you want to come forward, and I'll read the proclamation, then give it to you, Mark. Whereas throughout Eden Prairie's history, residents and businesses have banded together, pooled resources, raised funds, and encouraged giving to support a number of important causes invaluable to the community's well-being, and whereas these efforts have left an indelible impact on the quality of life in Eden Prairie, resulting in the creation of nonprofits, service clubs, and other organizations that on a daily basis uplift the community in charity and philanthropy, and whereas the enduring work and legacy of these organizations, their members, and their employees have touched many thousands and even multiple generations of Eden Prairie citizens, and whereas these philanthropic and charitable giving efforts have demonstrated the power that giving back to the community has in creating positive change, improving lives, adding amenities, and supplementing all that is provided by our city and school institutions, and whereas this effort to care for, nourish, develop, and enhance Eden Prairie's quality of life teaches its children about philanthropy and the value of neighbor helping neighbor, and whereas we can be grateful to the philanthropic individuals and organizations who have contributed so much to our social needs, our cultural life, the improvement of Eden Prairie, and the spirit of community, now therefore be it resolved that April 19th through 25th, 2015, be proclaimed Eden Prairie Gives Week in Eden Prairie in recognition of and gratitude for the work of nonprofits, service clubs, other community-minded organizations, and individuals whose spirit of philanthropy, charitable giving, and volunteerism make Eden Prairie a great place to live, work, and play. And with that being said, do you want to talk, Mark, a little bit about Eden Prairie Gives Week?
I just want to thank you for the proclamation. As you know, EP Gives Week puts the focus on giving back to the community, whether it's volunteering time or talent, or financially supporting Eden Prairie's nonprofits. And so, we're giving attention to people and groups that have been giving back to the community and really make Eden Prairie special, and we're trying to inspire people who have not yet given back to the community to hopefully do so. So, thank you.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the Eden Prairie Gives Event, too?
Yes, EP Gives Week, we have several events going on that week, but it culminates in the foundation's annual gala on April 25th at the historic bar known as the Green Acres Event Center, and we'll be celebrating a year's worth of philanthropy and honoring our newest grantees. So, we encourage everyone to come.
Thank you, and thank you for everything you do with the foundation.
And at that event, there's food and dancing, and it's not just a meeting.[706.51][706.51](laughter) It's fun. It's always fun.
Thank you.
And there's still tickets available.
Yes.
You're doing your job here, Mark.[715.51][715.51](laughter)
Minnesota Safe Digging Month proclamation is next. Do we have a representative from Centerpoint Energy here? Okay, great. I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll have you give some brief remarks. Does that sound okay? Whereas each year Minnesota's underground utility infrastructure is jeopardized by unintentional damage by those who fail to call 811 to have underground lines located prior to digging, undeserved consequences such as service interruption, damage to the environment, and personal injury and even death are the potential results. And whereas Gopher State One Call promotes 811, the national call before you dig number, which provides professional excavators and homeowners a simple number to reach Gopher State One Call to request utility line locations at the intended dig site. And whereas through education of safe digging practices, professional excavators and homeowners can save time and money keeping Minnesota safe and connected by making a simple call to 811 in advance of any digging project, waiting the required amount of time, respecting the marked lines by maintaining visual definition throughout the course of excavation, and finally, digging with care around the marks. And whereas Gopher State One Call serves the citizens of Minnesota at no cost to taxpayers and spreads the message that safe digging is a shared responsibility, and to know what's below, call 811 before you dig. Now therefore, the Eden Prairie City Council does hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Safe Digging Month in Minnesota. Thank you. If you want to introduce yourself, make a few remarks?
I'm Chief Jolie, I'm the... I'm a prevention supervisor with Centerpoint Energy. We just want to say thank you today for Eden Prairie's efforts to help us promote safe digging.
Okay, thank you, and I'll hand you this proclamation. Thank you. It's a good program, and for those who have used it, they respond very quickly to get out and mark varied lines. Tonight, at our city council workshop prior to the meeting, we had a presentation of the results of our Eden Prairie Community Survey. Some of you that are listening or here in the audience may have actually participated in that survey, and we have the gentleman that coordinated that for us, Dr. Tom Miller from NRC, here with us tonight, and he is going to present some of the survey results.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council and staff. I am Tom Miller, I'm president of National Research Center, very pleased to be here tonight with you. And tonight, I'm just going to go over quickly the high-level findings that we have from this survey. I know that we've had a chance to speak about this, and this is an opportunity for others outside who haven't had a chance to get the overall view, to appreciate what we've done here. The overall quality of community life, and I apologize, just trying to advance the screen here, perhaps I have the wrong item. Let me move over to the computer.
Sure, if you want to do it from there, that's great.
I think I might have a better shot at advancing the slides. I apologize. And there they are.
Okay.
So, we conducted this survey by mail. This was done roughly in November of 2014. Data were collected over a period of four to six weeks. 1,200 residents were invited to participate. The survey results come from about 27% of the residents who were sampled at random. The margin of error around any of the percents we'll talk about tonight for the entire samples, about six percentage points. We weighted the results to give a demographic profile that mimics the demographic profile of the community at large, and we also had the opportunity to compare results of the Eden Prairie residents to residents in other jurisdictions across the country. So, to the high-level key findings, the first has to do the overall quality of community life, very strong ratings they've sustained over a period of several years. This is the fifth iteration of this survey that's been done, the first time we've done it by mail. The little star there reflects the fact that the most recent survey results, the 95% of results who give an overall quality of life rating of excellent or good is higher than we see in other communities around the country. We also have asked other questions related to overall community quality of life relating to the Eden Prairie is a place to live, the neighborhood is a place to live, Eden Prairie is a place to visit, a place to retire, a place to work, and all of those ratings are very strong. These are higher than we see in other places around the country. It may start sounding like a broken record here, Mayor, but so many of these findings are very positive. These findings have to do with the community's perceptions about the appearance of Eden Prairie and about their feelings regarding the natural environment. Very strong, once again, nine in 10 residents giving positive ratings, which is higher than we see in other places across the country. We also asked these specific questions about outdoor amenities and the appearance of the community. Each one of these stars represents the fact that these ratings, roughly nine in 10 residents giving excellent or good ratings, are higher than the ratings we see in other places. We asked folks about safety. They feel safe in this community. The ratings for safety in neighborhoods and in parks and open space are higher than we see in other places, but these ratings also are very strong, even when they're similar to other places. Nine in 10 folks giving ratings of being very safe or somewhat safe. When we asked about problems, we broke out the results into the, those that were the most problematic and those that were least problematic, and here you can see those split as I've described, with the most problematic being traffic speeding and the least being violent crime or drugs. We asked folks about the quality of services. We asked about all of the services that we have in the past and we did here. Overall quality of service ratings were higher than ratings we've seen in other places, with close to nine in 10 folks giving an excellent or good rating to the overall quality of services. Value of services for the taxes paid, similar to what we see in other places, and still a strong rating of close to three and four, more than three and four folks, about two and three folks giving excellent or good ratings. When we looked at the individual quality ratings for all these services, this is a subset in the report itself, which is a document that I believe will be made public if it hasn't been already. These are the top-rated services. Those with stars are the ratings of services that are higher than we see in other jurisdictions. And you can see even among the lowest-rated services, street repair and street lighting, where three in four residents give positive ratings, despite those being the lower ratings among all of your services, they are higher than ratings we see in other places. We asked about engagement in the community, and you can see there's a gradation of participation in these various events that you put on in Eden Prairie. At the top level, where nine in 10 residents say that they've participated in or know about the Fourth of July celebration, down to Senior Awareness Month, where you have closer to a quarter of the folks saying that they know about or have participated there. As to information sources, folks are relying on word of mouth and the Park and Rack Program Guide by and large, even Eden Prairie News, where two and three turn to it for it, the major or at least minor source of information, and the smaller percentage of folks look to the city blogs and other sources for their information about the city. When we asked residents about their sense of being able to provide input into city decision-making, about 58% gave an excellent or good rating, with 42% giving a fair or poor rating. So, overall summary of findings, Mayor, we found that the community really values the high quality of life here. They appreciate the natural environment and the outdoor amenities. They feel safe, by and large, in all parts of the community. All of city services were rated high, some much higher than other places, and residents are engaged, but there's a gradation of engagement, and there's an opportunity there to maximize that engagement. That's my summary, Mayor.
Thank you. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we did have opportunity to hear you speak at our council workshop, and staff met with you today and had an extensive discussion of the results of the survey, which we have been doing about every two years. Now, one of the things I noticed when you went through it this time, which I didn't notice this evening earlier, was the figure on traffic signal timing, and I think you showed it as the arrow with going both directions, traffic signal timing. It's one of the lowest-rated items on the list, but I think that's kind of interesting because in the two years since we did the survey, we started those left turn on flashing yellow signs. So I would have thought that we would see some sort of bump up in our numbers as a result of that. But this is, the 58% is in conjunction with the benchmarks, correct? It's not saying we didn't change from two years prior?
That's correct. The arrow has to do with the comparison to the benchmark.
Right.
And it shows that it's roughly similar to others' ratings around the country for traffic signalization.
Okay. Did we have that question on our previous survey? Does anybody recall? We can look into that.
We'll check.
We've got so much data. It'll keep us busy for a couple of years till we do the next survey. Thank you. These surveys really provide us a lot of information that helps with decision-making at the city council level, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
To all of you that participated in this, and to Dr. Miller for consolidating and presenting the results. Thank you.
Good to meet with you. Thanks.
Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add or pull?
Mayor, we do have one item to add. We have a consent item to add for a lease agreement with the Metropolitan Airports Commission for our community garden, so that's a very positive thing, and another, a lease for garden plots.
Okay. Councilmember Case, did you have something?
Yes, I have one item under council member reports.
And I'm going to add one item there, too, so. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, March 3rd?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held that same date?
Move approval. Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. Thank you. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of items A through K on the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second. Anything to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held that same date?
Move approval. Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. Thank you. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of items A through K on the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second. Anything to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to our first public hearing, which is on the Wagner property. Mr. Getchow, are you going to start that?
I can do that, yes. Mayor and council, so we have before us a request for a planned unit development concept review, a district review, zoning district change from R-122 to R-113.5, and a preliminary plat on 6.5 acres. This is a request for a development of 12 single-family homes at 10841 and 10861 Blossom Road. The development, as I mentioned, proposes to create 12 single-family lots. The gross density of the project is 1.5 units per acre, and there are waivers being requested, minimum lot with waivers, that are related to the subdivision design that would allow for the street connections to go through the proposed development, and there wouldn't be a need for cul-de-sacs. So you can see when you look at the area here that it was set up, it appears to be set up for future roads to connect and go through based on the land that was remaining for development. The planning commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the project at their February 23rd council meeting, and I do see Mr. Blake here with Pembenton Land Company to provide a brief overview of the project, and the project proponent and the staff are here to answer any questions you would have.
Thank you. Mr. Blake, did you want to address us?
Mayor and council, I'm Dan Blake with Pembenton Land Company. I don't want to be presumptuous, but I don't know, I guess I want input. Do you want a presentation of the project? It's somewhat simple.
Yeah.
We can go over it, and I can show you a picture and...
Why don't we do it this way? We'll see if the council has any questions, and then we'll take public hearings, see if there's anybody in...
That is perfect.
Okay. All right. Council, do you have any questions for staff or for Mr. Blake? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the Wagner property? Okay. I guess you don't have to do a presentation. There are no questions. Do you want to make a motion?
Sure, and I just have a question after we make the motion.
Okay.
This is real simple, perfunctory, but, yes, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 6.5 acres, and approve first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers, and zoning district change from R-122 to R-113.5 on 6.5 acres, and adopt the resolution for, should be easier to say, adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 6.5 acres into 12 lots, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second. Okay. Councilmember Case, do you have a comment, then?
Yeah, just briefly. I mean, I understand why at times, because of increased waivers, we would not keep it at R-122, but even under R-122, you could have put 16 homes in. And so what was the main reason that we had to change zoning when we actually, I think, could have put it in maybe with waivers, additional waivers? So just more curiosity.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this property surrounding this subject property are zoned R-113.5, and it allows for the continuation of that zoning and the continuation of that neighborhood design.
Got it. And then my only other second question was that some years back, some of this current land was taken when I think the Townhome Development to the east was built for the NRT Pond, the National Urban River Protection Pond, water retention. And so I'm assuming all this development now, it had been planned to head water, will go into that pond?
Councilmember Case, yes, that would be the situation with this development.
So it can handle all its own water?
It can, yes.
Great. That's it?
Any other questions? There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The second item for a public hearing is a reading of an ordinance amending the City Code Section 9.60 relating to the use of lake waters, no-wake zones. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So this is an item that we've been talking about since the heavy... This is an item that we've been talking about since the heavy rains of last year, and a follow-up to that being that the city is looking, was to amend our ordinance and looking at incorporating slow no-wake guidelines and procedures for three of our lakes at Riley, Starring, and Bryant. In Minnesota, rules and statute give the city's authority to adopt ordinance to regulate watercraft speed on lakes within our jurisdiction. So we're proposing to adopt rules establishing maximum watercraft speed limits that are based on specific lake water elevations. And as you may recall previously, even though we were able to move pretty quickly with this issue with, with high waters last year, the feeling that we could revise our city code and then allow these procedures to go in place when we trigger certain elevations would be probably a quicker and easier response. And obviously, when those levels would possibly occur in the future, we have, you know, communication and other mechanisms in place to definitely alert everyone to that. And there are probably two issues that have come up, you know, in the last few weeks related to this. And one is the request that came from Chanhasan, and it was a good one, to use the 100-year flood elevation rather than the ordinary high water level to place those speed limits. And for instance, I think within a, you know, a 10-year period of time, there may have been 61 occurrences of that, as opposed, of that water reaching that level, as opposed to maybe seven occurrences when you're at the 100-year flood elevation, being probably a more apropos use that we, we agree with Chanhasan in applying that. And then another request from a resident that float planes be exempt from the requirement, at least on one lake, maybe even two. There was a request that float planes be exempt, and there are certain, you know, issues related to float planes where it wouldn't be a creation necessarily of much of a wake, but at the same time, if a float plane is subject to those limitations, it could be basically stuck in the middle of the lake if those rules were in place and there wasn't an exemption. The last thing I'll add is, following the first reading, unlike some of our other ordinances before the second reading, we do need to submit the proposed ordinance, and any comments we receive, especially from this public hearing, to the DNR. And then the DNR will have a period of time to then approve or deny our proposed ordinance based on our submittal to them as well. So I wanted to add that twist in this ordinance specifically.
Okay. It looks like the ordinance that we've received in our packet does reflect a change to the 100-year flood level for Riley Lake. But it doesn't really address anything about the float plane, correct? But all of this verbiage talks about watercraft. So wouldn't the float plane be exempt anyway because it's not a watercraft? Or is it considered a watercraft when it's on the water, and it's considered a plane when it's in the air?
So I believe it is considered a watercraft, but the city attorney is drafting language and plan, plans on, well, actually asking that, you include that in your motion tonight, but we would still put that in for the second reading as well. But you might want to weigh in on the differentiation of watercraft and float plane.
Yes, Madam Mayor, watercraft would apply to any form of transportation, so it would for the float plane. And the reason that we're okay with granting the exception is because, one, they would be landlocked. If it went into place when the boat was on the lake and it stayed in place for two weeks, they would be landlocked. The other thing is, there isn't a lot of float plane traffic. So when they are landing or taking off, they would be in the middle of the lake, farther away from the shoreline. We don't think that it would be much of a nuisance. It would cause erosion problems with the low volume. And when they do land and taxi to the shore, they'd be going at a low enough speed, much like a boat where it wouldn't cause a problem with the wake. So we're supportive of that. We believe Chanhasan is, too. Chanhasan ultimately has to agree with our ordinances so they mirror one another because it is a shared jurisdiction lake.
Okay. That sounds like a reasonable change. Councilmember Case?
I don't have an issue with the float plane regarding high water, but I kind of have an issue with the float plane. And I, both Bryant used to have a float plane, and then Riley. And I've been on both lakes, actually, not when a plane was going off, but at least to see it. And I, number one, I'll stop talking right away if you just tell me. We have no regulatory power anyway to even be discussing whether a float plane's a great idea on a busy lake with lots of boats. My gut feeling says, no, it's not. And if this was an opportunity to take a little bit of a stand, I would be in favor of doing that. That being said, if we don't have, you know, regulatory powers anyway, then it's just, I'm okay with the float plane then, based on the high water problem.
That might take a little bit of research. I'm not sure. It could involve a number of agencies, whether it's FAA, or DNR, or the city. So I think we'd have to do a little bit of research before we start exploring banning the use of some types of vehicles on the lake.
I mean, it is interesting, because we can control, to certain extent, motors and motor sizes. But, and maybe no one else has an issue with this, but boat traffic's not decreasing on our lakes. And the idea of landing a plane with more and more and more boat traffic in the years to come, to me, seems ludicrous. But maybe I'm the only one here, so.
Councilmember Aho?
I don't have a problem with the, the air traffic, because I think it's so, so light. I mean, and so few times that they're taking off and landing, I don't, I don't think it's a problem. And I don't think they're going to try to do that during times of heavy use anyway. So at least in my experience of using Bryant Lake and seeing the float plane on Bryant Lake, I've never, never, I think I've only seen it take off or land just a couple of times, and it hasn't, hasn't not been an issue. But I'm really glad to see this coming forward as a proposed ordinance, because I did see a need for this, and I think it'll really, it'll ease up people's concerns that live on the lake and not having to worry about having to keep track of these events and contact the city, and try to make everything happen in a short period of time like we had last time. And just having things, you know, more known and more published, I think is really a good thing. And so I'm, I'm very glad to see this come forward, and I think, I think it's really something that, that we should all support.
So could you talk a little bit about what the procedure would be when a lake hits the high-water mark and this goes into effect? How is it communicated? Who makes the decision? Who's measuring?
Madam Mayor, we, we actually partner very well with residents that live along the lake to keep track of elevation levels. So I think that would be a shared effort. We have our own gauge stations, but we have private property owners that are doing the same. You know, we get the phone calls when the elevations start getting to a, to a level people get concerned. So we will always monitor that in conjunction with the property owners. When it does hit either the 100-year or the ordinary high-water level, depending on the lake, then the, the ban would go in place. We would post signs at the entrance, the boat ramps. We communicate very well with the lake associations. There's a good network of people that get the word out very quickly. And then the way the ordinance is written now, it would call for a publishing in the paper. I think that's something we want to do a little bit further exploration. You know, the timeliness of getting the word out via the newspaper might not work in this situation. Once it's in place, the, the way the ordinance is written now, it would stay in effect until the water's dropped below that 100-year or ordinary high-water level for a period of three consecutive days. Now, the three consecutive days is a requirement that DNR has placed on all no-wake zones. I think that's something that we might have somebody here for the public hearing tonight to make a comment on that. But that's generally the practice that they like to employ with these types of ordinances. After the three-day period, we get confirmation it's dropped below that, the ban comes off. Notify the property owners, and you're free to use the lake as you would any other time.
Okay. Councilmember Aho?
I'm surprised to hear that three-day limit, because I know on, we do a lot of boating on the St. Croix River. And on the St. Croix River, as soon as the water drops below that, that high, high-level mark, the ban is off. It's automatic. It's not, it's not a decision, it's just automatic.
You know, I think it's an excellent comment and, and something that we should pose to DNR. I believe the reason they do that is because if you were to have a storm come in later that night, and it bounced slightly above it, and then you're notifying everybody, the no-wake's back in place, and the next day it dropped down. I think it's confusion, allow that lake to drop three consecutive days and actually get to a, a point where if it did rain, it might not get above that no-wake zone. So I, I think it's more of being able to provide a consistent message and not confuse people about, is it on, is it off? Is it on, is it off? But I think it's worth more discussion with DNR.
All right. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the no-wake zone ordinance? Okay. If you'd come and introduce yourself and give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Steve Williams, 9291 Kiowa Trail, and I live in Chanhasan. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and councilmembers. Councilmember Aho, you're looking good. Hope you're feeling as good as you look.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I wanted to just discuss last year's high-water mark. I'm happy to understand that we're going to the 100-year mark versus the, what was the other mark?
Ordinary high-water.
Ordinary high-water mark. I think that makes a huge difference. Last year, on July 2nd or 3rd, I found out that we were at the, below the, or the ordinary water mark, but we're not going to lift, we're not going to lift the water restrictions until July 6th. And I said, you've got to be kidding me. And the forecast for July 4th and July 5th was high pressure over Minnesota, sunny skies, no chance of, no chance of rain. And I'd said, and I had company at my house, and I said, I cannot believe that, first of all, the, the water level was much higher at many times, many years throughout that period. And now that we had put the restrictions on, now we're going to wait three days to get below a level that many times we had, you know, water traffic conducted. And I want you guys to know something. Your Public Service Works Director gave his cell number out to, to your staff on July 3rd, which I thought was like, are you kidding me? He goes, yeah, he, he must have left a message, if you guys have any complaints, here's my cell number. And he was out for the weekend. And he left his cell number for me to complain. And I, and personally, he saved July 4th on Lake Riley. Because here, he answered the phone as, as a public servant, and said, I, I shared my case passionately, probably, because I can do that once in a while. He listened, and he goes, you're right, I'm going to lift it. Because it's July 4th weekend, and we're, we're, we're going to lift it July 6th. That was the designated time per the DNR and per the city of Eden Prairie. And I had gone through Chanhasan Mayor, and everything was referred back to, to what you guys were doing. So that's why I called here and got that. And I just wanted to commend you guys that you got a great director that offered his cell number on July 4th weekend, got the lake opened, and really saved July 4th for, for those residents that like activity, and those, your residents that use Eden Prairie. So I came to really try and, you know, you love government to be a little bit more common sense. And this three-day restriction, when you got high pressure over, over Minnesota, and you've got July 4th weekend, we should never have government where they would, they even said that we're going to open it July 6th. Someone's not, someone's not thinking for the people when they are so entrenched in their rules that they can't let common sense say, no. And to his credit, whether he gets in trouble or not. To his credit, he did.
I think we should renew his contract one more year. I don't know. What do you think?
And it was the right call, and I love the fact that government does work once in a while, so.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
At least Eden Prairie government works.
That's right.
You're just living in the wrong city, Steve.
I just live here.
Anybody else who wants to address the council on this?
I'm Bobby Adamides, and I live in 9503 Hyvee Drive. I've lived on Lake Riley since 1991, and I've seen numerous events of high water and the damage that it causes, the erosion of the shoreline and the sedimentation in the lake. So I strongly support adopting this regulation, this, this rule. The only thing I would ask you to consider as you're doing this is signing, signage. Last spring, the, the no-wake notification was posted on a communication board that's near the boat launch, and there's a lot of communication on there. And I, and we, we found out that a lot of people just didn't see it. So if there is some provision put in that you put up a temporary sign right next to the boat launch, so we, we have a lot of visitors. We have a lot of boats that come and go on, you know, day-use type boats. So if we could have some provision made for, for signage, you know, that, that can't be missed, that'd be my only comment.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Great point.
Anybody else?
I'm going to speak. I'm Perry Forster. I live at 9505 Hyvee Drive. I want to talk about the three-day thing. There's a reason for it. Lake Riley is the recipient of water that begins in Lake Lucy, goes through Lake Anne, goes through Lake Susan, comes through Rice Marsh Lake. Water flows downstream. What we have to, the reason for the three-day variance on this is to allow water that's traversing from the upper reaches of the creek system to come down into the lake. I appreciate what Steve has to say, but there is a reason, and it was just not arbitrary, three days. It's because of what happens. And we have to, you've got to let all that water flush through and then outlet through the, outlet again at Lake Riley into the creek system. So there is a sound reason for the three days, and I would really, I appreciate what he has to say, but I would be very careful about doing it, because you could be causing greater damage. That's all I have to say about it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Forster. Anybody else? Okay. Is there a motion?
Wait, no, there's someone.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is. Okay.
I'm David Steen. I live at 6741 Beach Road on Bryant Lake. And my son lives at 6473 Beach Road. So we represent almost 20% of the Beach Road residents. And I fully support this effort to, to have a no-wake restriction because of the damage. It does the shoreline, and it floats your dock away. And, and last year, I had to tie in all of the sections of my dock in order to make sure they weren't outfloating, damaging other docks or boats. So I support that. And also, if you can do anything about the noise level of these wakeboarders, where they're playing their radios so loud that they, they can then hear it even at full speed in their boat, it disturbs all the other residents on the lake and the boaters on the lake. Thank you.
Yeah. Noise really travels over the water, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Council? Is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 9.60 relating to the use of lake waters.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Me, too.
Okay. All right. So that passes. I'm just curious, does boat traffic, is that subjected to our noise ordinance? Because I know we've had complaints in the past few years from residents saying cars are driving by with their windows open and their radios blaring, and decibel level's really high, and isn't there something we can do about it? Would that also pertain to boats?
He's looking.
You want to get back to us? We'll go ahead and start. Okay.
I don't want to keep you.
Okay. We'll move on to items C.
I don't think so.
It doesn't?
I don't think you're allowed to do that, but let me check a little further.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The next item is a resolution approving a special assessment for nuisance abatement action at 19184 Christie Lane. Mr. Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor and council. You may recall that we spent quite a bit of time over the last few years dealing with the, the concern that the neighborhood has and the city has with 19184 Christie Lane, and the council has, dating back a few years now, has declared that a nuisance situation. And we have made quite a bit of progress with, you know, several different companies that have an interest in the property. But one thing that we need to do is assess the cost to date, legal costs mainly, to the property. So it's, you know, it's our understanding that, you know, there are costs associated with this. Obviously, there are staff costs that we wouldn't recapture, but there are other costs that we pay out of pocket that we would like to recapture through an assessment on this property. So the city attorney can certainly also provide an update on the progress of this project. As I said, I, I know that we're making some movement with the end. As I said, I, I know that we're making some movement with the understanding that repairs can be made to the home and that the home is, when the repairs are made, hopefully the home can be in a positive condition and can be sold and can be habitable. That's what we're working toward. But this action tonight is a public hearing and then action to approve a special assessment for our cost to date.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Nelson?
Oh, yeah, I was sort of hoping to hear this, this progress piece. It seems like this has been going on forever, and how soon can we start seeing new windows and new siding? It's really hard to believe that putting the outside up is going to make the inside habitable, but whatever, we can do about the outside. So, you know, what, are they going to start here when the frost is out of the ground or what?
And the mayor members of the council, we have been working since the council passed the resolution declaring the property a nuisance and ordering the abatement. That was back on September 2nd, I believe. And since that time, the, the council's order set a November 1 date to, for the property owner to take care of the abatement and correct it. Nothing happened. We had to wait for that period of time under the statutory process. Nothing happened. Sometime in September, a few minor exterior items were taken care of, nothing of real importance. So we filed a declaratory judgment action and request for injunctive relief, mandatory injunctive relief. In October, the court granted 60 days to comply. Nothing happened. We brought a motion for default judgment against the bank who we sued. The property owner, who had abandoned the property and who told us no longer had an interest in the property, had told us, had dated the property to the bank. The bank has never filed that deed. The property owner stipulated to the request that we made for the summary judgment and the injunctive relief. The hearing was set in Jan, for January, and the day before the hearing, the attorney for the bank called my partner, Mr. Gregerson, to announce his appearance in the case, and he showed up at the hearing the next day. He, he did not oppose the order, and in fact, the court granted the order, granted our summary judgment, and then ordered them to do the work and get it done within 60 days, which would have been yesterday. The court was not particularly pleased that the bank had not responded until the very last day. Asked my partner if he would like their representative put in jail that very day. Mr. Gregerson told him he didn't think that was necessary, but that's how irritated the court was over that. And so immediately after that, several days later, Mr. Gregerson requested a meeting with the bank, repeated that request several times. It didn't take place until approximately March 6th. Mr. Schmieg met with them on-site to go over what was needed. We, we didn't see a lot of work during March. There were several important investigations that need, and reports that needed to be done with respect to making the house habitable. One, a mold inspection and report so that we knew the status of the mold in the house because there is a lot of mold and what could be done to abate that. And the electrical. We were sure the electrical panel needed replacement. It was rusty, and we were concerned about the safety of anyone in a house with live electricity with a rusted electrical panel. The mold inspection and the electrical inspection have been completed. I was told they were completed last weekend, this week, and now we are waiting for the reports. Had we not received those, we would have been filing another motion with the court saying they haven't done it, and now we want you to issue your order that we're allowed to go in. And I suggested to Mr. Gregerson, given the court's attitude toward, at the last hearing, that perhaps we ask the court to hold them in contempt of the order. Mr. Gregerson thought that was great bravado on my part, but he thought that that would not be worth the cost to the city to bring that motion that we ought to work more to get the order. I'm, we are both concerned about the city spending more of its own money, even though tonight you're being asked to assess the costs you've had thus far, and it's not a one-time event. As, as we gather more costs, I'm going to recommend we do it again. I was getting a sense that something was going to happen with the house, and I wanted to make sure that the assessment was levied against the property before it's sold, was sold by the bank, so that anybody purchasing it would have knowledge of that amount and that that would have to be paid off at the, at the closing. But that's where we're at right now. It has been slow, but given the nature of the due process that's required in the court system, we're moving practically as fast as we can. Had the motion for summary judgment been opposed and the, and the factual basis for it opposed, we still wouldn't be at trial at this point, so.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Aho.
So my question is, I see that basically we, we haven't really had a lot of progress in actually repairing the home. We're looking at, at our, our, our ordinances really relating to the out, the exterior of the house in terms of what it looks like visually from the outside. In terms of the interior, are, obviously, you're talking about mold remediation, and you're talking about electrical panel being rusted and having to possibly need some work. But what about the other aspects of inhabitability? Are we, are we in control of that, or do we have any say in that, or is that just up to the owner to, to deal with so that it makes it a saleable property?
All right. Councilmember, members of the council, we, by virtue of having our motion for summary judgment granted, the court has granted our relief that this property is hazardous and a nuisance and needs to be abated. So it's no longer the property owner who is in control of getting that, of, at their own pleasure, getting the work done. The court has granted our motion, so it is a declared hazard. It is a declared nuisance. And now we bring to bear with the court the remedies that the court can further impose. And those would be either granting the city the right to go in and make the repairs that are necessary, or rely, you know, based on the mold and the electrical are two very key items to get done, but there are, there are other things that need to be done. There's ceiling panels that have fallen in. I mean, all of this was listed in the material that was given to, to the court. So if, so if the bank doesn't take care of it in terms of complying to our satisfaction now that the property has been properly abated as, and is no longer a nuisance, then we will continue to ask the court for further orders to make them perform and make it a habitable house, to put it back in shape. When we really were, saw the pictures of the, of the house at one point in the interior, I had my just private doubts as to whether the house could be made habitable. But the information I'm getting now is they believe that they can properly renovate this house. So it's a, the 60 days has passed, we're more in control because we can pull the right papers right now and file them with the court to go back before the court. And I doubt the court will be very pleased with the lack of action by the bank, again waiting to the, to the last minute.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Case.
First place, I, I know that there's an expense on the city in the short term. I think it's the right thing to do, if only because we're making a stand, taking a stand, and future homes out there, or future banks, future foreclosures, see what we did. So I think, I think this is important money to be spending at this time. So my question really is kind of like, what's the worst case? Can they walk away completely? Can it fall back into our hands? Do we then have to pay to take it down? Then we sell the lot for, you know, 10 cents on the dollar. I mean, is that, is that a scenario that's worst-case possible?
It would be worst-case that they refuse to do anything and we ask the court for that type of relief. We would first evaluate how much would it cost us to make those repairs, all of them, so that we could then sell it and get our money out. And if, and if we could do that, I think we'd have a conversation then with the council about, is that what you want to do? Because a sale is always tentative, you don't know. Or would it be less expensive at this point to tell the court, "It's not worth repairing this house. We won't get our money out. It'll be less expensive to take it down." And, and I have some experience with taking down buildings and the cost of that and then selling the vacant property. And I feel, you know, I would be surprised if we were unable to recover all of our costs from the sale of the land itself.
That's good to know.
Councilmember Nelson?
Two questions. I assume, first one, I assume is public knowledge technically because it's gone through the court. What bank?
Green Tree.
Green Tree, okay. The second question is, is I know there's been other homes with exterior maintenance problems in town. Are we going to have to go through all this court thing every time we bring up the exterior maintenance issues?
No, we, we do have an exterior maintenance code.
Mm-hmm.
And we can use those remedies. The problem here was the property owner literally abandoned the house and moved out of state. So there was nobody for the building department to have a conversation with, to hold responsible. And so if, in a normal situation, a property owner is there and you can get their attention and, and not with a hammer, you can get their attention and work with them because that's what the city wants to do. You want to work with them, find tools and resources to help them bring the house back into good condition. And so that's the normal case. This is, you know, we represent a number of, of cities, and I've, I've had to go to, I've had, I've not had to go to court with respect to a home declaring it a nuisance. We've done that with respect to a commercial property in another city, but not with respect to a home.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on 19184 Christie Lane, the special assessment for nuisance abatement? Okay, hearing done, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the special assessment for nuisance abatement action for 19184 Christie Lane.
Any discussion, any comments? Did you have something else you wanted to say, or did you say?
At the, at the end of it.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Councilmember Case.
I just had a quick question. Are we also looking at a similar action? I think we're moving along on the Krautbauer, I believe, the, the property that was right next to the Wagner property that we approved tonight, that is sitting arguably in worse condition, just abandoned, boarded up, a nuisance. So are we looking at that also in, in a similar track?
Councilmember Case, councilmembers, we are. I think back to what councilmember Nelson said earlier, currently, it's an exterior code maintenance issue. As are many of our issues in the city, it's very, very rare that this Christie Lane property, because of the state and how it was abandoned and, and the neighbors coming forward, that we had to, you know, go to the court and get in the house. So we are following up on, on the Krautbauer property, but currently, we're working, you know, with the exterior maintenance code. We haven't, if we have to dive in deeper, we will and report back to you, but we're, we're currently working on that property.
I would say boarded up, when, a window boarded up house is not habitable inside, and I would think it's similarly uninhabitable. Did I say that right? Whatever. You can't live in it. So I would encourage us to move similarly, only because I can, those are the two worst I can think of. I'm sure there's others out there that are in bad maintenance exterior, but they're maybe being lived in, something. These are the only two truly abandoned homes that I know of that are a public nuisance and really a danger.
This whole issue has been real frustrating for the council and for staff and for the neighbors of this property on Christie Lane for a number of years. It seems to me when we had that last group of neighbors that came, we were going to be communicating with one of those neighbors as to what's been going on. Are we still keeping that up?
Tongue.
Oh, yes.
Good.
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes, on a very regular basis.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Next item is a resolution approving the Modified Tax Increment Financing Plan, District Number 16, and Amendment Number Four to Project Management Agreement. Mr. Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. You may recall that we, we had two public hearings in January for TIF district modifications or extension, extension of TIF districts. In this particular case, TIF District 16, which is Lincoln Park Apartments, we continued that public hearing or re-noticed the public hearing to this evening because the city and the, the developer and the attorney for the property were still, you know, fine-tuning the development agreement, and we've been able to do that. And if you recall, the issue here is extending the life of the district from 15 years to 25 years to continue to be able to provide the 140 units of affordable housing. That is part of this project, and that was part of the original agreement with the construction of this property at the time that the agreement went into place in 1999. And as background, again, Lincoln Park is a 186-unit apartment building at Single Tree and Flying Cloud Drive. And the district that was created at that time was to subsidize 20% of the units. I mentioned those number of units for tenants at, at incomes at, at different levels, whether it's 80% of the median of the metro and, and some units that are at 50% or 55% of the median income. So we've had this practice in the last several years of extending these initial districts, initially setting them up at 15 years, evaluating them at 15 years, making that decision on a case-by-case basis that we would extend them. Also, it's very important to us as well, from the Met Council point of view, to get credits from the Met Council and others that we're maintaining and keeping affordable units that without the extension of these districts would not occur otherwise. And so we've gotten some, some clarification that with our housing scores and analysis of our housing, that, that indeed, that we are getting, you know, credit for preserving these affordable units as well. I know that's a bit off of this project, but that's kind of a general policy issue I know we've talked about. And so the action tonight is to conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the Modified TIF District.
Okay. Any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this TIF district? Okay, is there a motion?
Sure. Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving Modified Tax Increment Financing Plan, District Number 16, Amendment Number Four to Project Management Agreement, and Second Amendment to Community Development Block Grant Loan Documents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Payment of Claims, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Now, the reports of councilmembers, we have a few items. First, I'd like to mention that I would like to see adoption of a resolution supporting the Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. This is something we've done for two or three years now, I believe, and it's a program through the Kaufman Foundation, pardon me, the Wyland Foundation, trying to advance the cause of energy conservation and particularly water conservation. So if you go to the Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation website, and I assume we have a link on our website, too, you can take a little survey, learn- we have a link on our website, too, you can take a little survey, learn a little bit about how to conserve water and how to conserve energy, and score points for the city of Eden Prairie by making a pledge to make some change in your daily life that will impact energy and water conservation. So that program is from April 1st to April 30th. Is there a motion for approval of that?
Move to adopt the resolution supporting the mayor's challenge for water conservation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Madam Mayor, can I point out one thing? If you've signed up for this in previous years, you can go back and sign up to say you would like to continue conservation of water, so that, I know we won it the first year, we didn't the second year, but I think that's just because people thought I'd already signed up and I didn't need to do it again. So I would ask that everybody who is continuing, go back and sign up.
Good point. Thank you, thank you for bringing that up. The second item that I'd like to bring up tonight is that one of the really fun events that we do as a city is the Arts in the Park event, which is coming up on Saturday, May 16th. And it's a great event for all ages, and it's all day long, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. One of the things that we need in order to have this event happen is we need to have artists that will participate in Arts in the Park. So you can get information on application forms and what we're looking for on the city website. Applications are due by April 10th, so that's coming up pretty quickly here. But there'll be entertainment activities for kids, food vendors, lots of art for sale. It's a wonderful event. So if you're an artist, please look into participating in that event. Mr. Case, you have an item.
Yes, I do, thank you. I had only one call on this. I just wonder if there's not more people that might be concerned, however. So we have a railroad line in our city, and what's happened over the last couple of years is tremendous, as across the nation, especially the northern states, a great increase in oil tanker rail cars and the length of them traversing through our city. So I'm not sure how many people really realize the extent of possibly the change in our own rail line over the last couple of years. And I, I fully understand as someone that lives near an airport or a four-lane road, that many of us move in and these transportation amenities are there. But it's when the, when the change occurs so that it's something that's unexpected or, or maybe someone moved by rail line, but they didn't expect train cars with hundreds of oil tankers to be in their backyard. So not just, by the way, oil, but chemicals and fertilizers and mixtures on trains that were there to be an accident would be devastating. So my question really just of staff and not tonight, but really up to whether council, to what extent or degree we want any feedback back, but I just kind of want to know what, what's the city's role or responsibility? Maybe it's nothing, maybe there are governmental bodies that control all this, but you just read in the paper yesterday that one of the major rail companies voluntarily agreed to lower their speeds to 35. That seems still rather fast, but, and I know that federal and state regulatory laws govern speeds that are not voluntary, and I believe it's 45, I'm not sure, but, so Glenn Johnson's sitting here, if you want to wave, former employee for decades with a rail company, but brought this to my attention, and he's really an expert that lives in our city that we may want to access. But I would just really be interested to have city staff just take a peek at it and just maybe give us back a quick report. And if the answer is we have no control whatsoever, then we don't, right? But, but if we do, or if there's some lobbying efforts that are needed, you know, we're not, we live in a society that needs gasoline, so I'm not proposing to ban trains coming through the city. I really would like to know, though, are there things that the city might be proactively doing that would preempt and make, make it safer? And so we, if there was an accident someday, we wouldn't look back and go, you know, we, we could have done something, we did nothing. And so I'm kind of proactively, just kind of looking ahead, and with the, you know, agreement of all of you, just to have somebody come back, a short little report, maybe at our next meeting.
I'm fine with that, that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
And maybe give Glenn a call as well, I mean, he is a resident expert, so.
We'll do that.
And by the way, you may recognize Glenn, Glenn ran against you and me back in 1994 for city council. I think there were 11 of us back then running, so he represented the fire department, so thank you, or not just the fire department, thank you for your service as a firefighter though, those years.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move into the HRA meeting, so I would like to have a roll call and call the HRA meeting to order.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Chair Tara Lukens?
Here. The first item is to approve the minutes of our HRA meeting that was held on January 20th of 2015. Is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The business of the day is to adopt a resolution adopting Modified TIF Financing Plan for District Number 16, the Lincoln Park Apartments, which we just talked about. Mr. Getzschel.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. This is simply the HRA now approving their own resolution, similar to what the city council did, thus even the timing of this HRA meeting following the council action. Same exact action at the HRA level.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution adopting Modified Tax Increment Financing Plan, District Number 16.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the HRA?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The council will now move into closed session. We're going to be reviewing our city manager's performance, and we'll be doing that in closed session. We'll come back later for adjournment, is that what you prefer, Mr. Russell?
The, the council won't be taking any action, and so I would say that you would be adjourning at the end of the closed session.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so we're just getting up and going.
Yeah, so typically then you would, you would move to closed session, you would not come back in here, this portion of the meeting ends, and then you would just adjourn following closed session. And really quick, Mayor, too, to clean up a couple of items from the meeting, the, the traffic signal survey question's not been asked before, so that's new.
Oh, okay.
So now we have that for the first time, and the city attorney is going back and forth on whether loud noise on, on a lake is or is not enforceable, so he's, he's starting to go in the other direction now, but he's going to do some research and get back to us.
All right, we'll keep him busy, thank you. Okay, we're going to closed session.
Thank you, have a nice evening.